Good evening, everyone. We'll call this reorganization meeting of the Board of Education to order. Before we get started, I would like to point out to everyone, based on the weather forecast and the fact that we are in a tornado watch, there are emergency procedures posted by the door on that side, also by the door on this side. And we do have interior rooms, so in the event that we get into a warning situation, also the bathrooms would be a safe space. So if you feel like you need to take cover, please help yourself in any of those public areas and do what you prefer to do. Okay. So the meeting is called to order. The first item on the agenda is to recognize the seating of newly elected board members. So congratulations to Rachel Henderson, Abe Smith, and Dominique Stewart. All three have taken their oath of office and started their terms today. So congratulations. Jenny, could you please take the roll call?
Amy Riddles-Blantzen.
Here.
Abe Smith.
Here.
Dominique Stewart.
Here.
Rachel Henderson.
Here.
Dale Dahlke.
Here.
Amber Kirsting.
Emily Hines.
Here.
Michelle Dupree.
Here.
Angela Wolf.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, and the first item on the action agenda is the election of board officers. The way that this will work is I will handle the meeting until the president is elected, and then at that point, the president will take over the meeting. Are there any nominations for president of the school board?
I would like to nominate Rachel Henderson.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Rachel Henderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Abe Smith, a second by Jill Dahlke. All in favor, say anybody by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous ballot has been cast. Rachel, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I don't speak currently, but if there's any opportunity. All right, next, I would need to elect a vice president. Are there any nominations for the vice president? I would like to nominate Abe Smith. Are there any additional nominations for a vice president? Any additional nominations? All right, seeing none. Oh, that's, I understand, a motion to close nominations and approve Abe Smith by unanimous vote. Smack him in the forehead. I'm going to make a motion by myself, I can lay down with that. All in favor? Say goodbye by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Abe. Next up, we'll take a nomination for clerk.
I would like to nominate Dominique Stewart.
All right. Any additional nominations for clerk? Additional nominations for clerk? Right, we will entertain a motion to close nominations and approve nomination for clerk. Motion by Angie, second by Amy. All in favor, say goodbye by saying aye. Any opposed? And we will entertain nominations for treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Ollie Halling.
So, motion by Michelle, second by Dale. Any additional nominations for treasurer? Additional nominations for treasurer? All right, entertain a motion to close nominations and to approve Emily Hines as our treasurer. Second, Abe, second by Dominique. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, and motion passes. Thank you, Ollie. Thank you, everybody. So, next we have committee assignments for the 2025 year. So this includes the health and, a representative to the Health and Medical Insurance Committee, high school, three high school graduation delegates, and that is for this 2025 high school graduation. A CIC review board representative, one CIC convention delegate, or WISD convention delegate, and an alternate to the WISD convention, a transportation contract representative, and two representatives to the Quality Improvement Committee. And we can just do this by volunteering, right? We have a volunteer to serve on the Health and Medical Insurance Committee. And most of these committees meet quarterly, but the convention delegates only do it once a year.
Can you, Captain, do anything else?
Okay, great.
Oh, no.
You were the one who reminded us about it. That's right. It happens. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make you feel bad. I should also note that volunteering for these meetings, if you, if you ever can't make it, we do a lesson to do, so don't have to worry about it. All right, great. Dale will be our Health and Medical Committee rep again. Three, four, five, six, our high school graduation delegates. Amy, Angie, Michelle. Michelle. Um, you know, if you could question what was that until? No, we don't. I did a lot. You did a lot, too. Okay, great. Time for the review board to wrap up the meeting.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, too.
Okay. I really don't want to.
This actually is a big useful context, so, because I actually came from a hard reading. When the city of Monmouth normally makes development plans, they often go through this process of tax discharge. And all of the taxing entities in the area have to be on the board to review those. So it's part of the long-term planning for the city of Monmouth.
Thank you very much for doing that. CIC convention delegates. So this one's in June, is that right?
Okay, I see, so I'm sorry. I was thinking, obviously, it was, yeah. June 2nd at 7:00 PM in Turboline. Thanks. Thank you all again.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you, Amy. And then WISD convention delegates. I'd like to do that one once again. Wonderful, thank you so much. We do need an alternate for the WISD convention. Okay, somebody willing to serve as an alternate?
I would love to.
Wonderful, okay. That was easy. You said that now. Transportation contract for clerk. I should note, that has been Amber Kirsting, not you tonight. I've been joking with Al Emmerich and Senator stuff, and essentially, well, we don't have to do that. Is there anyone else who, or not that I should have asked her, if she wanted to continue doing that? What?
Yeah, I'm hoping to meet with the bus company this Friday in the morning.
I would, if someone else wanted to, I would be happy to do it.
Okay. Do you know what time is it on Friday?
I think it was 10:00 AM. I don't have to confirm that, though.
Okay. Michelle, you are able to do one at all?
10:00 AM Friday.
I will send you a confirmation.
I didn't understand what you said.
Yeah, 10:00 AM Friday.
10:00 AM Friday, yeah. And Joe's going to confirm that.
Can you pass this to my friend? Tell me you're clear, because I can't really hear very well.
Sorry, 10:00 AM Friday.
Okay, am I going to do that then?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I will try to speak into my microphone better.
Thank you. It's okay.
All right, and then finally, we have two representatives to the Quality Improvement Committee, the staff committee, and we do it quarterly, but they're supposed to, like, serve on that committee the coming year. It's currently Abe and Michelle. Can you remind me what day of the week it is?
Usually, it's Monday, the first Monday of the month, in quarterly, so whatever those months are. I think October is the first one.
Well, there was just one in April.
I'm happy to do it, to say no one. But if someone else wants to do it, I'm willing to kind of say, I wasn't happy to say no one, I'm happy.
Hold on. Emily, were you raising your hand?
Yep.
I wouldn't. I'm only on Michelle, does that work? All right, Michelle will keep you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've got, I'm going to sign, and Michelle will be the third quality improvement committee. And again, if ever there are folks who can't make it to one of those committee meetings, you know, typically, I subbed in to kind of, I tried to make my little bills. All right, thank you, everybody. Our next action is to appoint a deputy clerk. I guess I'll entertain a motion for nomination for a deputy clerk.
One, Jill Riddles.
All right.
Second.
All right. Do I have to call for? All right, wonderful. Then let's do voice vote. Okay, let's all vote to approve Jenny Meisel as our deputy clerk. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same to me, Jenny. We're volunteering for that. And let's set a date and venue for the annual meeting. So stop following last year's calendar format. The meeting will be held August 26th at 6:00 PM. Is it really that late?
Yeah, typically, it's before Monday.
No, we typically will have a short, you know, keep the agenda as short as possible. A short special board meeting immediately prior, and this will be at a high school, probably in the tier lecture hall.
I was curious, do you have some of the summer school meetings?
August.
The jump start date? The jump start date, yeah.
And it's also on a note real quick. My calendar shows August 26th as a Tuesday, so I deleted the August 25th. I think the jump start date is starting on the 26th, if it's Saturday, right?
So, the 25th is Monday. The jump start date is, we'll start the Wednesday, 27th.
Are there any objections to having our annual meeting and budget meeting at the high school on August 26th? 26th, 25th, at 6:00 PM?
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Um, I'm just worried, is it, is it, reading while we have to activate, so we have space for one maybe, I'm assuming, because I find it very difficult to communicate with each other to do that, to, I don't know, that, um, stuff here, and if anyone else has that, we could.
Yeah. One thing, one year, we held the meeting prior, you know, the special board meeting in the library adjacent to lecture hall, where we could always sit around the table for the meeting, the special meeting portion of it. Yeah, go ahead.
I think the point is to have a venue that could host a large number of people. However, in 11 years in Menominee, I don't think we've ever had an annual meeting that wouldn't fit in this room. So I think it would be fine to have the meeting here. The only risk would be is if we feel like there's the potential to have overcapacity. Is it easier for I and Ben in Monmouth to record here versus in, yeah, you prefer that? I think it's important that local press can get a good recording of the annual meeting to get some important comments.
Are there any objections to holding the annual meeting here instead of that at school? All right. For Michelle, both are shaking their heads. So there seems to be no objection to having a annual meeting here at the ASC. So I'd like to, just to be clear, entertain a motion to have our annual meeting here at the ASC on Monday, August 26th at 6:00 PM. All right, welcome by Dominique, second by Amy. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a date and venue for our annual meeting. Finally, establish starting times for regular, special, and committee of the board meetings. So we have the meeting the second and fourth Monday of the month at 5:45 as our starting time. If folks feel comfortable keeping at 5:45 time, are there any concerns or objections or changes that anyone would like to see? For Michelle, it's not a bad, I got them all, some head shaking, everyone seems okay. So we'll keep our 5:45 start time. Okay, entertain a motion to establish 5:45 as the continued start time for our regular, special, and committee of the board meetings. Any second? Motion by Angie, second by Emily. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our the organization of the board meetings. So, all right. Oh, great, thank you. We are adjourned. Now, let's all get into board docs for our special board meeting. No problem. And we'll leave this in a moment. We will call the meeting to order. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Welcome to our special board meeting of April 28th, 2025. We'll start with roll call.
Amy Riddles-Blantzen.
Here.
Dale Dahlke.
Here.
Dominique Stewart.
Here.
Rachel Henderson.
Here.
Amber Kirsting.
Here.
Abe Smith.
Here.
Michelle Dupree.
Here.
Emily Hines.
Here.
Angela Wolf.
Here.
Great, we have a quorum. Let's stand for the fudgable reasons.
The fudgable reasons to provide of the United States of America and consider it all for which it stands, one nation, under God, universal, liberty, justice, law.
Under mission statement, the school district of the Menominee area, by embracing the unique needs and using the strengths of our diverse community, is dedicated to preparing all students to become like law learners, caring adults, and responsible citizens. Do you have any proposed changes to the agenda order tonight? All right, seeing none. We have no recommendations or nominations tonight, so we will move on to community communications. We have two speakers. First up is Josie Fulman.
Hi, my name is Josie Fulman, and I'm from Nap. But Vizadovsky, members of the board. What is DEI, and do we find it in the SDMA? D stands for diversity. Diversity Training says, you should want to accept a diverse group of students into our system, right? Unfortunately, this, excuse me, this ideology wants us to call all manner of thought or behavior good. We cannot accept and weed out the bad. We accept it all. This is lies masquerading as empathy. The truth tells us that not all behavior is good. Bad behavior must be consummate, and teachers need the tool of discipline. E stands for equity. Equity wants equal outcomes regardless of effort, or merit, or skill, or giftedness. It is considered unfair or unjust if Johnny beats Molly to the goal or completes a test with 100% when poor Molly gets only 50%. So now everyone in the classroom, and not just Johnny, gets a trophy or a sticker. No one in single level is better or worse than the other. This punishes initiative and rewards sloppfulness. I stands for include. This often relates to sexual identity in the schoolhouse. Teachers and peers are not allowed to correct wrong thinking or wrong behavior, even identities built on lies. So we have a gender policy plan that informs our schools that if someone feels like a boy in a girl's body, she can somehow turn into a boy and be treated like a boy. She shall not be corrected. That would be bullying or showing a lack of tolerance. But rather, she should be celebrated for her courage to do the wrong thing. Last week on WPR, I heard the news that Jill Undery, the recently re-elected superintendent of instruction, was going to sue the Trump administration for withholding federal funds from school districts in Wisconsin that will not comply with getting rid of DEI. Many school districts are joining with Undery. Some other school districts are doing the right thing, removing DEI from their districts rather than risk losing the federal funding. In which camp does the SDMA lie? Furthermore, regarding DEI, it is a Marxist ideology that destroys the foundation of the family. Children are taught that there is no danger in forming families based on sexual perversions. However, in truth, studies continue to confirm that children raised by their biological married parents do better on every level, including their education. That's a quote from J. Warren Wallace in his book, The Truth in True Crime, page 40. I hope the SDMA will take the removal of DEI from my schools very seriously and seek to remove it. This is the right thing to do, and you will not need to forfeit your federal funding for doing it. Thank you.
And next up, this next speaker.
First, I have to admit, I just spoke at the school board meeting in Nap, at Nap School. When I heard about the disclosure of the closure of WISD, my first reaction was, school districts, at times like, at times, I could use the closure of school for the combination of sports programs to foster interest in getting into my private path. This is not a crazy situation. I stand for it. It isn't, it didn't, I might discuss it later for you. Point, however, I would like to focus on my personal experience. In creating a new buyer plan, this becomes an opportunity to change the district's educational direction and focus more on reading, writing, and arithmetic, much less on social indoctrination through your pessy talent program, which includes CRT and DEI. I would like to share with you, sliding in the article from March, what it times, a newspaper, and I'm sure all of you have some instructions for it. The article refers to how to improve the university system. Being an entire high school teacher, it was apparent to me that the suggestions apply for all behavior. There are some suggestions from the law. A recent survey found that vast majority of students are in favor of scaling back, shutting down the DOD. The DOD funds a small portion of public education with less weight, and much of which its funds is idyllicly driven rather than guided by rigorous academic models. Overall, the DOD has been explicit in mediocre or poor results in educational outcomes for students since its establishment in 1980. Some suggestions that they have is, determine, I'm sorry, terminate the visit, idea, ideology, politics that have infected all educational level of youth with youth. Restore the tradition of competition on a level of playing field, also known as equality of public community for all students. American was founded on merit practice, not on special papers for certain minority groups or the coercive, technical, or career ring outcomes. Another suggestion is, restore rigor to all academic curriculum across all disciplines, not merely the STEM, STEM, or 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 STEM,
Right, motion by Dominique, second by Abe. And actually, I'm going to pause here. Just remind folks with the benefit of our board member on the phone, try to get your microphone close enough. All right, any discussion on the personnel consent agenda? We have a couple of recommendations of one folks that are going to be missed greatly. Anything you want to say, would it?
No, yes, you're right, Rachel. We're going to miss both Ms. Hunt and Ms. Van Boll a lot. We wish them both well in their family endeavors, but we really appreciate their work over the last several years. At the same time, we're very excited to be hiring Dylan Heine, a Menominee graduate, who will be a seventh grade social studies teacher at Menominee Middle School next year.
Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. And motion passes unanimously. Next, on to the action agenda. Our first item is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated December twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. undertake a motion to approve. So move. Second, the motion by Abe, second by Andy. So this is the defeasance that we discussed on March ten. Are there any updates or changes since we saw it at that meeting?
Eric, could you just briefly highlight what this will save the taxpayers?
Sure, yes, so. So in that form provided, it will save the district three hundred and eighty-five thousand, over three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from this defeasance. It will allow more flexibility in setting the mill rate in the future, and it will lower the payments, particularly at the end, in the final years of the loan.
Let's vote. Any questions or discussion on the defeasance? All right, seeing none, let's vote. And motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have a resolution on lending in the state annual budget. We'll undertake a motion. Hi, it's move. All right, motion by Emily, second by Amy, and we have a proposed resolution for the board to discuss and approve tonight that was drafted by Dominique. Do you want to do some discussion on this?
Sure. Um, so I guess I'll kind of start with the resolution, the statement that the school board of the district in the area called Oklahoma to pass a state budget bill that significantly increases federal division as well as the state with an eventual goal reaching a ninety percent some sufficient reverse number. And one of the reasons I worded it that way is because that is why the use priority in the way they worded it, instead of putting a specific percentage, for what the first increase would be, they worried that it would be a significant increase with the eventual goal ninety percent. And the most reason I found is school makes this happen.
Thanks for your effort in putting this together and the initiative in getting us to do it. Any questions for Dominique about the resolution as drafted, or discussion about this?
I think it was very stupid and as simple as can be for one of the revolutions. Had to fix that thing along, but it's the way they structure it. I'm just wondering how we want, assuming it addresses, how we want to, you know, share with lawmakers with the question, is there a, you know, what's the preferred mechanism to broadcast this as a statement from the board?
I mean, I was thinking, um, everywhere. Um, so I am thinking I'm going to be hearing tomorrow. And so one, well, I think one option is to submit online, um, submit your comments. But I could read this.
I would more like to get for it emailing it to each involved, and I'll broaden it sense. But I would assume everyone in the joint finance committee, as well as the law maker that are in our area in Little Rock, the Bay District.
I could send those myself. Is that okay with everybody? I think in addition to that, this is something we can be individually sharing on our networks, right? And asking folks to share this, and especially in that kind of last, the last paragraph, an easy statement to ask people to be requesting on their lawmakers, whether they're able to attend the meeting or not. Anybody can submit online comments. So we could be asking our friends and members to participate in that as well.
Would you like us to put it on the other hand?
Yes.
If you could just give Jenny the edit of the full version, we could, if we don't have it already, we could do that right away in the morning.
Wonderful, thank you. Any discussion on the content?
I was just thinking, would it be good if everyone was signed it? Or is it just?
I saw some variation. So I saw that we could have a line with everyone signing it, or I saw some versions that had the president and the court sign it. So.
I wondered, would that more probably help everybody?
I think those are cool.
Do you folks have a preference? I guess the timeline of getting it signed would be tricky. If we wanted to submit a signed version on the other hand, I think is the deadline for public comments? Does anyone know that deadline closes? Is it tomorrow?
I was just looking it up because I'm not sure.
Do you know, Joe? What's the window for public comments on the committee? Do you know that closes? I think it may close either tomorrow or at some point.
I would have to look that up to be sure.
Yeah.
Jenny did say that she thinks she could turn this around at the night and get people's signatures before you leave, if you would like.
Yes.
If Michelle's not here, Congress is not here. I don't think that impacts the decision.
To me, it impacts the decision because there is no way we could have all members' signatures on it. And so I don't know.
And since Andrew's not here, we could even, like, just type their sign if someone's here, honestly.
Yeah.
I think it's fine if it's, I don't think I've worked on to that extra upper, or sort of marginal impact.
Next go around. I would be really proactive and not do it the day before. That's because I was leaving the way I'm listening. I would be too late for it.
Oh, and here. All right, any additional comments or discussion on the content signing or dissemination of the statement?
Good work, Dominique.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for leading the way on this. Yeah, so let's vote. And motion passes unanimously. On to our discussion agenda. First up, we have an update on the transition for Downsville students and staff. There's a nice summary here in Board Doc. Do you want to say anything worth observing?
Sure, thanks, Rachel. And first of all, I'd like to compliment our students and staff and families at Downsville. We've had a very smooth couple weeks in terms of the messaging that has been back and forth. We are very busy developing transition plans. So I'll just run down the list a little bit. First of all, with our students, our teachers did a great job. I appreciate Tonya and her department working with Mrs. Lee, provided teachers with talking points to help have a conversation with students the day after the board meeting. Notification did go out to families. A lot of the process for expedited in-district transfer request opportunity that actually just closed, and our elementary principals met. We did notify families where their new attendance boundary would be. Our elementary principals at Oakland and River Heights Elementary School hosted tours and meetings for parents to experience the school, to help them, give them the opportunity and inform their decision. We are working with staff and transportation and materials at the end of the school year. So we have a Q and A document that's been created and that we're working through. Also, our director of maintenance has been scheduling for the summer, transporting those items so that our staff members will not have to transport items between the buildings. And then lastly, with the community, we are in the process of developing an opportunity for people to sign up to be part of a committee. That committee is going to study the recommended work to consider by January first of next year, so that the board can have some ideas of what is next for the Downsville school. There's a lot of opportunities already being investigated, but we do want a committee. Brian is going to chair that committee on behalf of the school district. Mrs. Lee will be involved, and we will have, I'm sure, many interesting ideas to discuss. So that's a real short summary. Are there any specific questions that anybody has tonight?
I have a question. I know you said that you sent a letter to all the families and told them where their attendance areas would be. And then I think we had talked about if they didn't like their attendance area, they could have told them to go or moved to another school if there was room. Has that, has there been any of that? Or have they pretty much stayed where they wanted? Where you were with them?
There's been quite a bit of movement. That window closed, actually, today, this morning at eight AM. The elementary principals met right after that, and we're working on getting out the approvals. Our plan is to approve all the requests. We have also watched very closely the class sizes in Talon, and I'm happy to report that all of the class sizes will be within the class size policy threshold.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Dought for the tours that you hosted. I went to vote with them, and they were just really well done and really considerate of the needs of the families and students. Very welcoming, and I really appreciated the work that went into that. Any questions or discussion on this transition? All right. Moving on to our quarterly review of the district work plan.
In the interest of time, Rachel, I'm going to just really highlight a couple things, if you don't mind. If board members are certain you have questions about any of the third quarter progress. It's been a great third quarter in terms of the progress on the work plan. The administrators, our staff, everyone has been very active and continuing to work towards the goals that the board approved last summer. We have had a lot of attention on the high school and efforts that Mr. Drake and the staff there have had in order to try to improve student achievement and performance. And as you can see in the work plan, a survey was actually issued out to the staff to try to gauge the staff perceptions on the effectiveness of some of the key changes that were in place this year. And I don't know, Rachel, if you want me to just open up for questions and Mr. Drake and I and Brian and everyone else can take them, or if you want us to continue with the presentation?
Yeah, let's open up for questions, I guess. If folks, in particular, starting with that high school improvement survey results, if we could start the discussion there and then move on to the broader goals and activities. Is there any questions or discussion related to that staff perception survey? Or anything in the high school improvement efforts? I personally thought, I mean, I thought the survey was really fascinating. It seemed like it was really, yeah, well done, and gave some very good ideas about how staff departments are going there with the things.
Mr. Drake, did you have any takeaways from the improvement process that you wanted to share?
Sure. So I guess just generally speaking, as you guys probably often took a look at, how we were trying to approach like some achievement gaps right now for the high school by putting that from a lot of different areas. A few of the areas we highlighted is the survey, things like cell phones, backpacks, hallways. Our study hall, our intervention period, and trying to make that more academically focused as possible. And so the survey, I think did a good job from the staff's perspective of showing that. Most of our staff feel like this is going pretty well. If you look at, I think the lowest score in the category was eighty-eight percent of the staff felt that that category was three or better. So a positive rating for that. And the rest of them are higher than that. So I think that part is really good. The other part that I guess I really appreciated was some of the summer statements that we were able to pull up of, out of the survey as well. So our staff were able to have a lot of open-ended opportunities to come on different topics. But then we were able to use AI to come and kind of pull up some of those common themes that took place. So things like inconsistency of climate for our students occasionally, or perception that maybe the importance wasn't as consistent as it could be, was one that I thought was really helpful because if it's working really well in one classroom, but maybe not in the one next to you, for whatever reason, how can we dive into that a little bit more to figure out how we can make it seem a little bit more even throughout the different classrooms of the building? The other piece with study hall and really changing that to be even more of an academic focus than it had been in the past. We saw a little bit of maybe resistance, might be the right word, from students at times. I think it had been used in part by some as more of a, maybe a break in part of the day. We're really trying to refocus that as an academic intervention time. And I think we did a good job throughout the year of really focusing on that. So a couple quick takeaways from mine would be those. And we really appreciate the continued feedback that the staff has given either through staff meetings or our board leadership team, just some things that we can continue to do to improve upon what's happened at the high school.
And there are many factors that go into student achievement and student success. And Brian does a really good job with the different reports that he'll have coming to when we get into the fall. We were able, we found out today, actually, that we do have some information that we can share specific to the high school. Brian, can you just give a real short of what we know so far?
Yep, so our state assessment windows officially closed the end of last week. The ACT assessment at the high school was first in those windows, as state assessment was taken just prior to spring break at the high school. And as Bill indicated, we will be a lot more detailed if we delve into later, or if we chair the board and any type of thing. But some initial takeaways, when they look at this current duty cohort, we really, we kind of built into three initial categories. An ACT score composite of thirty-six points, from the look that we have in the past, the numbers app, so that thirty-six points. But then when we take a look at this current cohort, we can see that seven percent of them have scored thirty or higher. Twenty-three percent of them have scored twenty-five or higher, and forty-seven percent of them have scored twenty-five or higher. And then when you take a look at all four of the assessed areas, the benchmark categories, the state has about twenty percent of students, it looks like, hit that benchmark in each of those categories. And on the high school this year, twenty-seven percent would hit that. So you know, most of the higher rates that we put. A little bit of context, getting all four of the benchmark categories. Back here on the ACT, the state is also at twenty percent. And on the high school, fifteen percent. So pretty drastic difference between the last three. And then the context, the state over the last five years has consistently been rating in areas of about eighteen or twenty-eight percent of students hitting all four of the benchmark categories. And at physical, we have to look back five years before we have more than twenty percent hitting all four categories. And this year is, I think, twenty-seven percent hitting the category. So a pretty big swing this year. And let's say each cohort is unique and to itself, but some initial takeaways are still really, really important to the state. And a lot of that, as we talked in some previous meetings, we were just very talking about some of the changes at the high school, about the importance of our pressure assessments and the issues to be addressed in that. The policy update that has been really focused on. I have a current junior, and I know something that's talked about really in the high school. This is a, it's been a while. That's really giving me. My question, though, is, we have percentages, and you know, they're all, you know, they're somewhere above twenty. So what percentage is the goal point? Just curious, if you, I don't think you know.
Any other questions or discussions specific to the high school report? All right, then any questions or discussion on the rest of the updates to the major goals and activities for the school year? Thanks for being here, Casey, and thanks, Brian, for talking about those things. All right. Absolutely, go ahead.
I'm going to, the time you want me to ask this, but I'm sure, so I had a conversation in passing with a literacy coach. And she was telling me something And she was telling me something that I was really thrilled to hear and didn't, I wasn't aware of. And I, I wondered if it would be, I'd love for her to come to the board, and she was like that too. She mentioned her, some of the data on how she feels being a main station is definitely what she knows, she can see, and she and Brian and others have worked out for the future. So hearing from her, it, it gave me some more insight, and I just thought it'd be fun to interview.
So just for anybody who couldn't hear that, Michelle was suggesting that perhaps we have the literacy coach join for a board meeting and present to the board under the efforts that have been made in pillar one and the improvements that have been made with literacy, and not only for the current improvements, but also for the future. That's certainly something that we could look at as we look at our board agendas moving forward.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. Thanks for bringing that, Michelle.
Kind of adding on to that with Act 20, I noticed Brian's going to be working on the promotion policy, and do we have an idea timeline that would be us to review?
Yep. So we'll be looking at these about July 1st, I'll put that. So essentially, I had a meeting with staff members today on an initial draft of building principles, and we'll keep providing some feedback tomorrow as well, and then we'll be making some updates. So that process is moving forward.
And then with the retention policy, is that something that's approved by the DPI or just by the board? So we just have to have it like on file someplace?
Yep. The timeframe is more best to review and approve a promotion policy by July 1st, typical in effect not later than July of 2027.
Any other questions or discussion on the quarterly work plan updates? All right, moving on, we have an update on the SDMA strategic planning work. We have attached here results from, or a slideshow that synthesizes results from the survey, and I believe we have a member of the steering committee here to talk with us about it.
Yeah, thanks, Rachel. We did have our steering committee meet last week. I think that was the third time that we've met. And I know Amber Kirsten is the board's rep on that committee. Amber wasn't able to be here. So Kennedy Waddell, one of our middle school teachers, who is also on the strategic planning committee, is here. And Kennedy was going to give the board a little bit of an update on the progress that we are making on the new strategic plan. So Kennedy, take it away.
Thank you. Let me say, I love being on this committee. It's been so much fun, you know, all the fun stuff. One of the big things, the conversations that are had at the meetings, there's so many perspectives and some pushback and some kind of like agreeing on things, super nice facilitation by Accelerator, it's just great. It's just so nice to kind of have it laid out, we come and pass the homework before some of the meetings, that we're able to like prepare those ideas and kind of gather thoughts and everything. Done a lot of work on the first two pillars, so kind of the academic one in general, and then the student experience kind of one for pillar two. One of, a few of the big things that have come out of just those two things, from a lot of the listening sessions and then the survey in the community, which had really great input, Milwaukee community, some of those things for the foundational reading skills and all kinds of like that foundational skills that come into elementary school, even private elementary school, which means really great like act, you know, that kind of stuff, it's big meeting. So it's obvious that with, we will go, the reason why Milwaukee can be present in the next five years and beyond. So the other things that they talked about are this idea of multiple pathways, which was in the last time we were planned, a lot of those like high school tap opportunities for kids to graduate with credits and just kind of explore a lot more. And also anomaly for that, and so like a lot of those things actually weren't even from I was here, which is not extremely a lot. But it's just super nice to see that maybe ones that graduate with, you know, not just that business degree careers, but more like technical stuff, like the medical classes and those things, but that is kind of like facilitates and everything. That's been the big, kind of just look at community network, it's so needed for high school, I do it, yeah. And I mean, what was talked about with some of the practical skills that come with being able to leave high school, regarding now AI technology, being ready to just kind of be a critical figure out in the world, which is really needed, and a lot of discussions around that. Another good thing that came out is this idea of the whole students, not only like rigor in their academics, but support in their personal lives as well. They spend, almost every day with us at school for nine months out of the year, like we are in charge of a lot of their social emotional developments and a long way through academic development. And it's a huge commitment and tasking, so it's really nice, but a lot of the input, both staff and community members saw the need for that whole child to be a district authority. That's kind of the big stuff. For questions, there's a lot, and we've done, we're kind of only the first two clearly, and there's just so much information, so I tried to convince it, but if there's questions, I can maybe ask and answer them.
If I could just add, before you ask your questions, and to Kennedy's point about a lot of information, thousands of comments between the listening sessions, and then 911 people participated with a strategic planning survey. So the consultants are telling us that our response rate for the SISHR community is just terrific.
I don't know if anyone in the room can answer this, but if anyone can. So I'm looking at the slide that page five, the, you know, slide that's in the lower left, that they'll, they're pretty good record for low satisfaction. I'm, I'm wondering what the color code is on that particular slide, if anyone knows? Because there are two labels, and I'm trying to figure out which one matches.
There were a few things with the data and the slides that we're waiting to hear back. So we'll have more information on those specifics. Kennedy, maybe you feel differently, I know Brian was part of it also, Casey, I don't feel like any of those issues slowed the committee down, but certainly there are a few things before we were released publicly the results that would need to be cleaned up.
Yeah, the reason I ask that kind of a prompt question in the future, Tom, not we have to answer it now, is just when there's distinctions, like in the slide at the lower right on the same page, one page five, there's some, like one of the same categories, one more dissatisfaction than other categories. And so I think that's the sort of thing I, I, or that I pulled out and think about, what are we undersurveying in that category?
Thank you.
That's also another discussion to people that brought up, you know, like who's not in the room and who wasn't able to conduct the survey or conduct the session, so. Other questions or discussion, either on the slide deck about the survey results or about the strategic planning process and the status of that? Thank you so much for being here tonight. I appreciate you sitting on the committee and taking the time to come in and talk to us about it while Amber couldn't be here.
One really quick thing, so the previous item talking about downtown, mentioned the committee department response to downtown, and kind of kind of plan for the future, and that was going to be kind of, I think, creating those strategic plans, a very important site. So remind me of the dates of when we expect this process to wrap up and then go into that process.
So the goal of the strategic planning committee is to have a draft of the new strategic plan ready for the board to consider this summer. So I would anticipate action in July. At the end of this school year, we will be soliciting interest in the other committee that will be used to study the future of the downtown school. So our goal is to have that committee created by the end of the school year, but the work of that committee will not really begin. There may be some investigative homework type of work over the summer, but in terms of the actual discussions, I think, Brian, you were thinking more like the fall, right? Early fall?
Sure, can be. Yeah, thanks for that update. The results of the, of the new five year plan will have a lot of, do a lot of influence on that process. Any other questions or discussion on strategic planning? All right, on to changes to the SDMA employee handbook for the 2025, 26 school year. Let's note, we have a link to the existing handbook as it is in Word docs, and then the PDA for course revisions.
So first of all, this is just the first review. We did have a QIC meeting at the beginning of the month and got feedback from the QIC group. We do have some language updates, and Sam will be kind of going through the highlights of that. And then for the next meeting, when the board actually will be considering the handbook, we will have a new copy of the handbook with the changes in the executive summary embedded into the handbook, so you'll have a full handbook actually considered. But for tonight, we're looking at the executive summary. And, you know, as always, a number of editorial changes with dates and directories and table contents and such, but there are a few changes of substance. And Sam, if you wouldn't mind, please go through those.
Sure, no problem. The first two discuss paid leave in the district. And so the first one was adding some emergency leave, or an option, I should say, for emergency leave to be requested by staff and approved by either the HR director or district administrator for extenuating circumstances. This came about more so because we had a couple of staff members that had some situations kind of out of their control, like a house fire, for instance, needing to take more time off than, than was available, and as far as reasons are concerned. And so we felt like with some conversation and communication, that we would be able to allow people to use their paid leave to cover some of those dates that they would need to, to be at their home and dealing with some of those other situations.
Sam, if I could just jump in. So the current employee handbook language is very restrictive. It's one day of emergency leave per year. And as you can imagine, there are plenty of things that require more than one day to deal with. We would plan to still be fairly restrictive, but we need a little more flexibility and working time for it.
And then the second is in response to some, again, flexibility with more personal days. So right now, our employees receive 15 days of paid leave, and two of those 15 days can be used for personal days. And so we wanted to offer an opportunity for people to be able to use more of their free paid leave. We find that as people are with the district for a longer period of time, that they accrue the paid leave and would like a little bit more flexibility to be able to use that. So we are suggesting to allow people to use 15 days of their accrued paid leave, of paid leave, in exchange for one additional personal day, and they could do this up to three times in a year. And so that was the, kind of where we were looking at allowing a little bit more flexibility.
And if I could jump in on this, those of you who have been on the QIC before and have had these discussions with staff, this is not a new idea. I think every year we've spent a lot of time reviewing leave policies, and it's such a difficult balance because it really is a bit of a transition in terms of how people characterize leave. And our district is one where a large amount of leave has been provided with the idea that it's kind of more of an insurance policy, also with a number of our staff members that end up having maternity leave or paternity leave. You know, we care as a district to provide the opportunity for those people to stay employed and still be compensated. However, what we're seeing, just kind of the way society changed, the restrictions of the paid leave are problematic. And so that creates situations where, like we do with the emergency leave, where more flexibility is needed. And even though we already have personal days, people kind of plan for those days and really use them more as vacation days. So then we run into situations where someone does have something that comes up unexpected, and they have already used their personal leave. And then it really puts them and the district in a difficult position where either they have to report to work on a day when they really, you know, whether it be for family or personal, or whatever the reason might be, really makes it difficult to report to work, or, you know, calling sick when, you know, perhaps someone isn't sick. It just, we want to promote honesty, and we want to promote a good environment for our employees, and in talking with the QIC group, I think this is one way to do that. The other concern is that we have a number of employees that never use leave, so they bank all their leave, and then, you know, they end up having the maximum accrual, and they get to the point where they kind of feel like towards the end of their career, where it's kind of use it or lose it. There really is no incentive not to use leave. And we have seen that, many of our retirees are terrific, and they work all the way to the end and maintain professionalism, like most employees do that. But there also are times where I think if there was just a little bit of incentive, I think that would be a good thing for retirees. Now, some school districts have payouts for unused leave, and I'm sure that's something that some people would like. With our budget situation, I really am concerned with the idea of payouts for unused leave. You know, especially when you talk about the number of staff members we have, the liability that we would be accruing immediately would be quite large. Also, when you look at those payouts for paid leave, it's really interesting. You know, I talked to other superintendents and also other employees in situations where they do have payouts for paid leaves, and trying to come up with a number that's high enough, where it's not an insult, but also affordable and makes sense budgetarily, is really, really difficult. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I am interested, I did talk to one of the QIC members actually this afternoon, and we'll look for additional QIC feedback before the board takes a vote in May. But that's kind of the summary of this provision. You can keep going, Sam.
Okay. Something.
Maybe there's a question?
These can be approved.
Depending on when you were hired, it's either 120 days or 90 days.
Are you talking about total?
The next two, 5.01 teacher assignments and 4.02, the calendar year full time in person employees, those were just some additions to be able to update more of our practice at this point, and to define a better process. And then, I guess the 4.02, it was just updating the dates because they were outdated by about 10 years. And then the final one in 5.01 holidays define, that one, we had received a request of some, some information from some of our hourly folks during the QIC, about how hard it is and how difficult it is to go for longer stretches of time with the, with the number of days off that we have. So during Thanksgiving break or during Christmas break specifically. And so one of the requests was to be able to exchange or change Labor Day and Memorial Day and add January 1st and December 31st as, as holidays, paid holidays for them. And so we, we are requesting that change be made as well, so that those, they have a couple of extra days during the Christmas holiday break.
Yes, for hourly workers, when we have the long Christmas break, the winter break, that is difficult for cable. So this request was made, and we think it makes a lot of sense. It's not adding holidays, it's just moving the holidays to the winter break time period.
And then just the last part would be updating those salary schedules that have already been approved, excuse me, by the board, so just making sure that all of those are updated in the handbook.
All these changes are things that have heard, discussed and advocated for the QIC, and this is very responsive to the concerns people had, so I'm glad to see them.
Yeah, I said it on the most recent QIC meeting, and just wanted to note, you know, this question about cashing in paid leave, obviously folks have asked to be able to get a payout for it, but as the discussion went on, I really noticed that some people were saying like, look, we want to be acknowledged. And I really think this was a good, you know, a good step and a good decision. And I agree with what Amy said, these changes seem to be responsive to exactly what staff have been asking for.
Michelle, would you like to say something?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. Being on, on QIC, and also cross referencing that with what we're seeing in, from the data, actually strategic planning, and what our community wants for our district and the future of our district, it, one of the things jumping out at me from that data is that the top priority to retain and keep our highly qualified staff, recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff. And I know from being on QIC, this is authentically, all, every one of these things is authentically brought forward to us from our staff and, and through the preparation refined, and I really think that it reflects what our community is asking from us as well. So it's just, it's, I agree, very responsive to our staff, to our community.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions or discussion on the employee handbook provisions? So this will come back for a vote, probably at our next meeting. I would also be interested to see if you get any comments on the QIC members on this. Next up, we have school board memberships, so the board's request, Joe has gathered information on the cost, and details for potentially joining the Wisconsin Public Education Network. Do folks have questions or discussion on this? Go ahead.
Rachel, I'd like to just point out, I've been asking for the list of school districts, and I did get it today, so board members might not have seen that, but it's, it's in your package in the administrative content. And then there's a pretty substantial list of school districts that have done this and have become part of the Wisconsin Public Education Network. There is a brochure that lists the benefits, and I guess that's, that's the information I have for you tonight.
So we've talked to the other administrators, I'm surprised to see only a clear from our particular topics. Have you? Have you talked to the others live?
I do have a meeting on Thursday with the Big River superintendents, and I'm sure that'll be one of the topics of our discussion. I'm sure cost, it's not very expensive at all, but I'm sure cost does factor in any expense, you know, that schools are concerned with, also potentially the political piece of it, but I would say also, this is, you know, a newer, maybe more grassroots group than, than some of the larger organizations that some school districts prefer.
Also to say, I think geography might have a lot to do with it, you know, they're based in the Madison area, some very, and I think places, districts that have closer checkpoints might be more likely to join. Sorry, go ahead, David.
I think, I, I would be supportive of joining, I think, not, you know, saying that there's all sorts of questions out there, but to me, one of the things is looking at our budget compared to the budget of other districts. Whatever happens with the state budget, it's likely you're still going to be, you know, pretty low on the list of funding for students compared to other districts, reasonably in and around the state, and so I think it, I think it's up to us to reach out and find allies and partnerships which can amplify our voice, wherever they are, and I think this is, you know, an organization which has shown success in doing that. I think it is, it is a young organization, it's, you know, small but mighty here, but I think that they are doing a really good job of helping districts, you know, look at, look at legislation, look at referenda, look at how to reach out to other, other community groups and build support, I think that's what we, our colleagues need in the future, I think that's what they're hoping for.
I've been very impressed with their organization, they're always at the state convention, and I just recently was on a meeting with them, they have monthly meetings, and whatever, and they're, I was on a meeting, you know, state with them, and they have, you know, a really great advocate, and they just can help me out with my fact of referenda, they would have helped me listen to you about that, and, you know. They're just, they're just really nice people. And one of, one of them, you know, that is in our region, Emma Claire, is, they said before, she used to be on the school board, and, um, um, Claire, and she is one of the regional directors, I believe, and spends time, you know, in this area, talking to people and so forth, so I think it's, I think it's a great fit, and so, thank you.
So unless there are objections we could bring us forth next meeting for a vote, this would be updating policy one sixty-three point one, that would add the Wisconsin Public Education Network membership to our list of board memberships.
First, I will tip, recently, and I don't know if you're, if you're a single member, but please phone us, or, or whatever, or email, one of the things, is they actually have a link where you can actually link it to, and then do your, what you want to say for the Wisconsin Public Education Committee. So, that's kind of cool, just able to know if you can do that.
They have been doing a lot of support to members to participate in that process. Okay, finally, we have legislative advocacy, just to put, I guess, we'll bring this up for a meeting for a vote. Next up, we have legislative advocacy, Joe has shared a letter, his draft of the letter to the Joint Finance Committee, go and discuss that.
If I plan, or I plan to send it out tomorrow, so if anybody has any suggestions, please just get ahold of me tonight or early tomorrow morning, thank you.
All right, okay. Any questions or discussion? All right, items related to next leading dates, board committees, and reports, are next meeting is May twelfth, and I'm not going to do that for this, we just moved, and I came to mostly to adjourn, so. Thank you, thanks, Michelle, for participating, Michael, thanks everyone for staying here.